Answers all of our attendance questions. I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. And I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alders Heck?
Here.
Thank you. Henick?
Present.
Thank you. Campbell?
Here.
Thank you. Lemer?
Here.
Thank you. Martin?
Here.
Thank you. Press to Jackamo will be late. Alders Rumel?
Present.
Thank you. Skidmore?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Tierney is excused. Alder Verveer?
Here.
Alder Wehelia?
Here.
Thank you. Vice President Abbas?
Here.
Thank you. Alvarez?
Here.
Thank you. Balday?
Yes.
Thank you. Bidar?
Present.
Thank you. President Carter?
Present.
Thank you. Evers?
Here.
Thank you. Foster?
Here.
Thank you. Furman?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have Quorum.
Thank you. I'd like staff now to read the meeting instructions.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to start our meeting by saying thank you to all of the outgoing Alders refraining from speaking under each of your resolutions for the sake of time, but I want to thank you for your service to the city and to your district and to your constituents. And I also want to congratulate and welcome all of the incoming Alders as well. We will start by suspending certain rules. President Carter, would you move suspension of the rules, please?
I will. Move suspension of the rules. Suspension rules 2.04, Order of Business 2.05, Introduction of Business 2.24 ordinances and 2.25 resolutions for items designated on the agenda.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. We have a number of honoring resolutions this afternoon. We will start with item number one, which is Legisstar 65088 commending and thanking Alder Person Sherri Carter for her dedicated and conscientious service during her tenure as President of the Madison Common Council. Vice President Abbas, would you read the resolution, please?
Absolutely. It's my honor to read that. Whereas Alder Person Sherri Carter was elected by her peers to the Office of President of Madison Common Council on April 21st, 2020 for the term of 2020, 2021. And whereas Alder Person Carter met biweekly with the Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway and Common Council Vice President Sayed Abbas to discuss city issues. And whereas during her term as Common Council President, Alder Person Carter also served as a Chair of the Common Council Executive Committee and served on Alcohol Review Committee, Community Development Authority, Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility in Public Discourse Award Committee, Finance Committee, Medicine Art Commission, and Room Tax Commission. And whereas during her tenure as Common Council President, Alder Person Carter worked with the Mayor Rhodes Conway and Common Council Vice President Abbas on COVID-19 plans and issues around violence prevention, health equity, small businesses, and economic recovery, eviction prevention, and effectively advocated for the Common Council. And whereas Alder Person Carter has met the demand of her additional duties with commitment and dedication and services. And whereas Alder Person Carter fulfilled her duties as Common Council President while ably representing and responding to her 14th Aldermanic District constituent concerns and issue. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Common Council commend and thanks Alder Person Sherri Carter for her dedication and continuous services during the tenure as a President of Madison Common Council.
Vice President Abbas will move. Is there a second? Alder Harrington McKinney will second. It's been moved and seconded. Vice President Abbas?
Yes, I would like to say a few words. It was my honor to work with President Carter. Last one year was extremely really hard for all of Common Council, especially in a leadership role. President Carter expressed humbleness, leadership, dedication, and commitment in many issues regarding COVID recovery, civil rights movement, Black Lives Matter movement, small businesses. Alder Carter expressed exceptional services, collaborate, and listen to the Common Council, as well as she kept her commitment to serve her own district. So, and I had great experience working with you. I really appreciate for giving a lot of your time to the Common Council and for the community. Thank you very much. It was honored to work with you.
Thank you so much, Alder Abbas.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Is there further discussion? President Carter, did you wish to say anything?
I do wish to say something. I see that Alder Harrington McKinney has her hand up. Do you want to go to her first, or?
Alder Harrington McKinney, did you wish to speak? I didn't see your hand.
Thank you very much. Yes, I wanted to speak. And I wanted to say to President Carter, thank you for your leadership. When you stepped in, it was your turn. And you led the council with some, during a challenging period, but it was done with civility, it was done with dignity, and it showed that you really cared for the city. Thank you so very much. Appreciate your leadership. I know that you will go far. And I am honored and privileged to have been able to serve alongside of you. Thank you. And I wish you-
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you.
President Carter?
Yes. First of all, I just want to acknowledge my mother, who is listening on this with me, and acknowledging my father looking down on this event. Many of you know that I have dragged my mother to neighborhood meetings, picnics, events during my time as Councilwoman. And many of the residents have asked where my mother was versus where, when am I coming? So I need to acknowledge her popularity. Excuse me. I served with grace, integrity, and respect when at times it was pushed to the edge. I became president when the world erupted with the murder of George Floyd and many other injustices were revealed. We had protests, pandemic shutdown, crippled economy, and overwhelmed health system, increased hate and fear. These were unprecedented times, and we have a long road ahead of us. With everything we had to deal with in the city, we somehow, somehow, we let hate and discord enter the chamber and divide us into pieces. We saw high-tech lynching this past year. Our colleagues were burned at the stake, and we watched in silence. And silence is acceptance. And it all played out for the city to see and write about. The chamber stands for much more than us individually. It represents our city. It represents our history, good or bad. It represents the city. And our residents deserve and expect much more than we gave them this past year. But more importantly, we deserve much more than we gave each other this past year. For those who are leaving, I want to thank you for your service to the district and to the city, and your impact will not be forgotten. To the newly elected, take time to learn how government works and not how you want it to work. To my returning colleagues, hate, discord, and destruction cannot live in this chamber. It cannot live within us as policymakers. We must set the example. We must walk the talk for these next two years because they will be challenging. As you know, we have increased deficit, economic recovery, and so much more that I can't list at this time. To the mayor and the second mayor that I've worked under, it has been an honor to be part of your leadership team and to work with you and your deputies. And to the best city staff a city could help for. You are simply the best. I'm amazed at your dedication, knowledge, and commitment to this city. And it's always an honor to work with you. And finally, it's been an honor to be the President of the Common Council. And despite what I've said previously, you are my colleagues. I stand by you because that's what a president and a colleague does. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, a unanimous vote will be recorded. Thank you again, President Carter, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving to item number two, which is Legisstar 65089, a resolution commending and thanking Alder Person Sayed Abbas for his dedicated and conscientious service during his tenure as Common Council Vice President. President Carter, will you read the resolution?
It'll be an honor. Whereas Alder Sayed Abbas was elected, it was elected by his peers to the Office of Vice President of the Madison Common Council on April 21st, 2020 for the term of 2020, 2021. Whereas Alder Sayed Abbas provided invaluable support and advice to Council President Sherri Carter. And whereas Alder Person Sayed Abbas met biweekly with Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, her staff, and Common Council President to discuss city issues. And whereas during his term as Common Council Vice President, Alder Abbas served as Vice Chair of the Common Council Executive Committee and served on the President's Work Group to review and revise the Chief of Staff position, Public Market Development Committee, Sustainable Madison Committee, Warner Park Community Recreation Center Advisory Committee, and Urban Design Commission. And whereas during his tenure as Common Council Vice President, Alder Abbas worked with the Mayor Rhodes Conway and Common Council President Carter on COVID-19 plans and issues around environmental justice and sustainability, and effectively advocated for the Common Council. And whereas Alder Abbas has met the demands of his additional duties with commitment and dedication. And whereas Alder Abbas fulfilled his duties as Common Council Vice President while ably representing and responding to his 12th District constituents concerning issues. Now, there be a resolve that the com, that the mayor and the members of the Common Council commend and therefore thank Alder Sayed Abbas for his dedication and conscientious service during his tenure as Vice President of the Madison Common Council.
Thank you, President Carter. President Carter will move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We'd like to have somebody else second. I think Alder Lemer will second that one for you, Vice President Abbas. Thank you, Alder Lemer. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the resolution? President Carter?
Alder Abbas has been, it's been such an honor. We use, we're going to use honor a lot today. But it's been such an honor to work with you this past year. One of the things that I can tell you I've learned more about than any other year is sustainability. And, and your innovative ideas. You are so committed to this city and so committed to your district. It is almost effervescent. You can't help but take that tall drink of water of your commitment and try to incorporate that into your spirit. And I just so, so, so very happy I got to know you. And hopefully, we will continue to be friends beyond the Common Council. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Henick?
Thank you. I was just, to Alder Abbas, thank you so much for, it was refreshing and impressive to see the amount of input you took from residents and brought it straight to the council. That, that kind of representation, you know, doesn't come easy. That's a lot of work. And I just have to say, I've been impressed for two years at your ability to really amplify the voices of your residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Henick. Vice President Abbas?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alder Henick, and thank you, President Carter, for your very kind words. And I look forward to our friendship. Got an opportunity to know you personally beside work. That's also, you know, blessing to work in a leadership to know. And so, thank you very much for that. I will really thank my wife, Holly, and my two little kids, four-year-old and two-year-old, to really, you know, help me out and especially my wife to really, you know, motivate me and being a stone in a relationship and really giving that motivation to go out and do stuff for constituent as well as for Common Council. Without her support, I think so, it's, it's not going to be possible. So, thanks to her. Also, thanks to all of my colleagues. I learned so much from all of you as of, as you know, first-term Alder and as a Common Council Vice President. I've got an opportunity to really work with really bright and fantastic all group of Alders. And I learned so much from all of you on various topics, various issues. And a lot of you had, I was fortunate to work with a lot of you who have a lot of institutional knowledge about the city of Madison, as well as a batch of 2019 Alders. It was a great experience working with all of you and also advocating for you at the leadership level as well. So, thank you all. And I look forward to work with you all in future and collaborate. Thanks. And yes, and thank you to, before I give the floor away, thanks to Mayor for being very patient with me. And, and I asked a difficult question, respectfully, difficult question to the staff. So, thank you, them. I will keep asking those questions and keep expanding my learning. So, thank you, staff. Thank you, Mayor. And also, thank you all my constituent for trusting me and re-electing me as well and giving me an opportunity because without them, there's no Alder Abbas here. So, thanks all.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution and move on to item number three. Item number three is Legisstar 65085, commending and thanking Alder Person Shiva Bedar for her dedicated service to the constituents in District Five and to the city of Madison. Alder Martin, would you read the honoring resolution, please?
I would be happy to. Thank you very much. Whereas Alder Person Shiva Bedar was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 7th, 2009. And whereas Alder Person Bedar served on the Ad-Hoc Committee to Investigate Alcohol Use in Parks and Central City, Adma, or Ad-hoc Landmarks Ordinance Review Committee, Administrative Review Board, Alcohol License Review Committee, Alder Work Group to Develop Logistics and Operational Details for MPD Independent Civilian Oversight, Board of Education, Common Council Liaison Committee, Board of Estimates, City-City Liaison Committee, Common Council Executive Committee, Common Council Organizational Committee, Community Development Block Grant Committee, Community Development Division Conference Committee, Community Services Committee, Complete Count Committee, Early Childhood Care and Education Committee, Education Committee, Finance Committee, Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility in Public Discourse Award Committee, Joint Campus Area Committee, Judge Doyle Square Committee, Low Income Bus Pass Program Committee, Madison Food Policy Council, President's Work Group on, on Policy and Community Relations, and TIF Policy Review Ad-Hoc Committee. And whereas Alder Person Bedar was elected by her peers to serve as Count, Common Council President in 2013, and again in 2020. And whereas Alder Person Bedar brought to the council an array of personal skills and gifts, including an ability to span, span and unite diverse communities, an almost superhuman work ethic, and understanding of the nuances of her district as well as other districts, helping her balance district needs with the needs of the city at large, a sense of urgency to prioritize action over rhetoric, and an overriding sense of compassion and professionalism. And whereas Alder Person Bedar was an expert on policymaking from evidence-based best practice research to planning and budgeting and ensuring buy-in for adoption, all the way through equitable implementation and evaluation. And whereas Alder Person Bedar was a master of nonverbal communication among council members and could, with one glance, convey any emotion from agreement to exasperation to don't even think about it. And whereas Alder Person Bedar developed strong relationships with her colleagues, acting as an ongoing advisor, mentor, and true friend. And whereas Alder Person Bedar is a great connector, able to connect the dots, and equally important to connect people, bringing them together for a thoughtful, broad approach to issues. And whereas Alder Person Bedar worked diligently with city staff on much-needed improvements to the Randall School, Olive Jones Park, and Stevens Park, as well as numerous traffic calming projects in District Five. And whereas Alder Person Bedar led the creation of the Emerging Opportunities Program to allow funding of anticipated community services, needs, and innovative programs. And whereas Alder Person Bedar championed many immigrant rights resolutions and council actions, affirming the city of Madison as an opening and welcoming city, condemning the presence of immigration and customs enforcement in our city, and ensuring a clear MPD standard operating procedure regarding non-cooperation with ICE. And whereas Alder Person Bedar provided leadership and subject matter expertise to create the Madison Language Access Plan. And whereas Alder Person Bedar advocated for and co-sponsored the creation of the MPD Policy and Procedures Review Ad-Hoc Committee, the funding of the OIR report, and the creation of the MPD Civilian Oversight Board and Independent Monitor. And whereas Alder Person Shiva Bedar, through her hard work and dedication to her Aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank Alder Person Shiva Bedar for her dedicated service to her constituents in District Five and to the city of Madison.
Thank you. Alder Martin will move. Is there a second? Alder Lemer will second. We do have registrants on this item, starting with Bridget Maniachi of Lexington Ave., to be followed by Fernando Cano Espina.
Hey, guys. Are you okay?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Shiva. I'd like to say, from the class of 2009, you have outlasted us all. I'm very happy for you, very sad that you're leaving the council. You have been an amazing mentor, not just to me, but to many young women who have wanted to work within city government and get to know their communities. I have many, many, many fond memories of lots of long meetings, whether city or otherwise. And you have always been a guiding light for how to be cool under pressure, how to be a savvy negotiator, how to be the most stylish, and, and be fabulous and be taken seriously. So, I, you know, I'd love to be able to get some drinks on the terrace with you and celebrate. Hopefully, soon in the future, we will all be able to get together because a group chat is not enough to convey the amount of help and emotion and gratitude that I have for your many years of service to the city. So, with that, congratulations. And I would like to say that I, I think that Krishmit was correct in that I would love to register my opposition to your retirement. And I wish that you could continue to do this for a long time to come. For the new members on the city council, I will say, I hope that you listen to the folks who have done this job of that. This is a full-time job. It becomes your life in so many ways, for better and worse, sometimes good, sometimes bad, sometimes ugly. But it's about the service to others. And there's no amount of words that can- And there's no amount of words that can express how impactful the work that you're about to undertake is going to mean to so many people. So, Shiva, for everything that you've given to this job and to your colleagues, many, many, many big hugs and congratulations and all of the highest honors to you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Fernando Cano Espina of Wheeler Road, to be followed by Fabiola Hamden.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Shiva, it is a pleasure for me to be here and say thank you, gracias. We love you. You have changed this city. You have made this city a place that I am happy to live, to be part of. You have encouraged me to be part of city committees. You have changed so many people's lives for the better. You are that superwoman. You are not only my friend but my family. We will definitely miss everything that you do in the city. And God, you really changed this city for not only the Latinx community but every community. And I hope that every Alder that is working now can use your example to, you know, with compassion, with love, with dedication, with caring, with a lot of work and a lot of late nights to change the world for the best. So, we love you. We will continue making those changes with you wherever you go, with the city. And yeah, thank you. Muchas gracias, Shiva, por todo, por todo lo que tú haces. Te queremos mucho. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Fabiola Hamden of Swanton Road. Fabi, are you there?
Oh, there I am. Hello.
Hello.
When I started this, everybody, I don't have a speech written. I want to try to be brief and not to be very emotional. On behalf of all the immigrants in this country, in this city, in this very own Madison, I wanted to thank you, Shiva, for all your hard work. You have made the channel of communication between our communities and the city council. Without your tenacity to volunteer, I don't think we have done much in the city. You have improved the lives of many, many people, including myself. I wanted to thank you, and I wanted to tell our new council members coming, follow the path that Shiva has put for us all. En nombre de toda nuestra comunidad, chivita, de toda tu familia que te queremos, muchísimas gracias por todo. We're gonna miss seeing you there and working there, but I know you're in the community and I know that you're not gonna stop working. So, thank you, and muchas gracias. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, it's been moved and seconded. Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will try to be brief since I know we have a long day ahead of us, but I wanted to try and say a few words for someone I have an enormous amount of respect and admiration for. It's incredibly hard to put into words the impact Alder Bedar has had on the city and the council, and I'm grateful to my predecessor, Alder Marklear, for his contributions to Alder Bedar's honoring resolution that Alder Martin read. The council is losing a legend. Alder Bedar was so very good at this job. Her ability to amplify voices of the community, devise solutions to complicated problems, and make everyone around her better was just extraordinary. The job of being Alder is loosely defined. Frankly, it's what you make of it. I won't spend time this afternoon litigating the recommendations of the task force for government structure, but I do have very strong opinions on how broken our system is. Somehow, with an incredibly important and high-profile job at UW Health, Alder Bedar consistently was able to be what I call a firefighter, deal with emerging, high-profile issues and problems in the city while also working on meaningful and sustainable, long-term change in policy. I've had an opportunity to watch, learn from, and become friends with Alder Bedar over the last two and a half years, and honestly can't figure out how she does it. She's really shy with her opinion or observations, and I'm so grateful for her ability to turn her experiences and knowledge into practical solutions. I think Alder Bedar will be one of the first people to tell you how slow and hard change is in government, but despite that knowledge, she never stopped moving us in the right direction. Alder Bedar exceeded in all the areas required to be a successful Alder: understanding and listening to her constituents, staying connected with numerous community organizations, building and maintaining strong relationships with other Alders, and very importantly, staff; preparing for meetings by reading all available material and never hesitating to reach out to staff with her questions and ideas. As recently as our last council meeting, I was discussing an upcoming agenda item with her, and she was telling me about the multi-hour planned commission meeting she watched that was discussing the item. She never stopped working. The work was very evident during the budget season. Her deep knowledge of the city and its departments and her relationships with staff was incredibly valuable. By the time the complicated budget reaches, the council for review and approval, there isn't a lot of room for the council to make many changes. I've been absolutely amazed in her ability to find creative ways to organize funding and make sure important priorities are supported. After a particularly rough patch last term on the council, where the council was locked in a nasty policy battle, I was pretty discouraged. Alder Bedar reached out and insisted I attend an event at the federal courthouse with her. I wasn't sure what to expect, but that day I watched a wider range of individuals of different backgrounds get sworn in as naturalized citizens of the United States. It was an incredible reminder of what makes our community and this country so great. It was so moving to watch these individuals and their families celebrate this special day. I'm so grateful Alder Bedar was one of those individuals several decades ago. Thank you, Shiva, for your contributions to our city. We will miss you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemer.
Thank you, Mayor. It's very bittersweet to be sharing a few words on how much Alder Bedar is leadership and savvy, but also her kindness and her friendship has meant to me and how much I'm going to miss her. In the time that I've known her, I've admired her for being someone who will always stand up to defend the most vulnerable. And long before we started working together on the council, she helped me with things like organizing phone banks to support deferred action for our childhood arrivals and was always the leader willing to pass the mic and uplift others. She was one of the first people I called when I first decided to run for council, if not the first person. And from a personal perspective, I believe I am a better person for knowing her. She's always been there and available to me anytime, regardless of the millions of other things that she's doing. Her accomplishments on the council are far too numerous to count, from fighting for the safety of our immigrant community to her leadership in establishing civilian oversight to fighting for BIPOC-led organizations to have a seat at the table and distributing desperately needed rent assistance. I'm pretty sure that she doesn't sleep because, to this day, I have absolutely no idea how she does everything that she does. She's got to be the best manager of time I've ever met in my life. So, while I'm selfishly really sad to be losing her on the city council, I am forever grateful to everything that she has given to the city, and I'm forever grateful to always be able to count on her. And I hope that with one less job on her plate, she'll be able to take some time for herself, but I expect that she's going to continue working tirelessly for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bedar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alders Martin, Furman, and Lemer for the kind words. Twelve and a half years ago, I decided to run for Alder because I wanted to have a seat at the table and make a difference. Because I wanted the city that I call home to be the welcoming and equitable city for Black and Brown residents we all aspire to be. I never had imagined, as a first-generation immigrant from a land where democracy has been an unfulfilled dream, that I would ever run for office. But I did, and here I am, twelve years later. I have done my best, not only succeeded in making the bold changes I aspired to, but I always came prepared for the decisions before us, big or small, because every decision matters and impacts somebody's life. There are many moments I will never forget. Here are a few. The day I first took office with the most diverse group of family and friends present, cheering me on, many of whom are in the virtual gallery today, and the rest always there, from a faraway land to the fifteen-minute Madison drive away. Alder Arvina Martin being sworn in as the first Ho-Chunk Alder in our history. The poetry readings at the beginning of council meetings every quarter. Arranging for all council members to meet with His Holiness the Dalai Lama. City staff, they are incredible dedicated civil servants without whom I could have never done any of my work. The many conversations and emails with my constituents, meeting and working with many incredible colleagues who have become great friends. I want to thank my neighbor Sam for dropping the most amazing food at my door while I was on long city meetings. Thank you, Robin and Maggie and all my District Five neighbors for believing in me and trusting me to be your Alder. Thank you to my cabal of ex-Alders. You know who you are. I am so grateful for you. To all the Alders and Mayors I have served with, it's been an honor. I have learned from each of you. To the council office staff, I just don't know how you do it. I want to thank my incredible family for joining me today: Brenda, Fabiola, Rizel, Lourdes, Julie, Diego, Karen, Veronica, Baltazar, Patricia, Teresa, Doña Yolanda, Fernando, Lily, Isubanda, Will, Maria, Andre, Annette. Last but not least, thank you to my parents and brothers for making me the strong woman I am. I am beyond filled with joy to see the new council, the most diverse council in the city's history, be sworn in today. You will be faced with many challenging decisions starting tonight. What makes the Madison Common Council special is that it is a nonpartisan body. Each Alder is entrusted to study the issues, listen to the community's voices, and apply our critical thinking, always centering our core values, to take a vote. The act of voting on each item is a heavy weight, one that often has kept me awake as one has to live with its consequences. Being on a legislative body is complex, but as many of you, I am a community organizer at heart. My one advice is to use the same skills of successful community activism in your work as Alders: identifying key issues that are important to you, finding solutions, getting people engaged, forming coalitions, and finding common ground. Life is about living the world better than you found it. I hope to have done so in my service on the council. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bedar. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution. And that brings us to item number four, which is Legisstar 65082, an honoring resolution commending and thanking Alder Person Marsha Rumel for her dedicated service to the constituents in District Six and to the city of Madison. Alder Verveer, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Alder Person Marsha Rumel was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 3, 2007, and whereas Alder Person Rumel served on the Ad-Hoc Landmarks Ordinance Review Committee, Administrative Review Board, Board of Estimates, Capital East District Committee, Central Park Design and Implementation Task Force, City-County Homeless Issues Committee, Committee on Aging, Committee on Employee Relations, Common Council Executive Committee, Common Council Organizational Committee, Community Development Block Grant Committee, Cultural Plan Steering Committee, Downtown Hotel Feasibility Study Committee, East Washington Avenue 800 Block North Committee, East Washington Capital Gateway Build Steering Committee, Finance Committee, Garver Building Reuse Committee, Garver Feed-Mill Criteria and Selection Committee, Historic Preservation Plan Advisory Committee, Housing Diversity Planning Ad-Hoc Committee, Housing Strategy Committee, Inclusionary Zoning Advisory Oversight Committee, Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility and Public Discourse Award Committee, Landmarks Commission, Long-Range Transportation Planning Committee, Madison Arts Commission, Madison Local Food Committee, Pedestrian Bicycle Motor Vehicle Commission, Plan Commission, President's Work Group on Police and Community Relations, President's Work Group to Review Administrative Procedure Memoranda Applicable to Alders, Public Market Development Committee, South Capitol District Planning Committee, Tax Incremental Financing Policy Ad-Hoc Committee, Union Corners Ad-Hoc Committee, Urban Design Commission, Water Utility Board, and Zoning Code Rewrite Advisory Committee. And whereas Alder Person Rumel was elected by her peers to serve as Vice President of the Common Council from 2016 to 2017 and as President of the Common Council from 2017 to 2018. And whereas Alder Person Rumel sponsored land banking policy that led to the city purchase and redevelopment of Don Miller Parcels on East Washington Avenue and Kohl's Grocery for a French battery factory at Union Corners. And whereas Alder Person Rumel championed the preservation of historic Garver Feed Mill and found a developer to rehabilitate and reuse the building. And whereas Alder Person Rumel initiated a series of processes to address officer-involved shootings and lack of community trust in the Madison Police Department, including creation of the Ad-Hoc Policy and Procedures Review Committee that selected the OIR group and chaired the President's Work Group on Police and Community Relations that put forward thirteen recommendations. And whereas Alder Person Rumel played a leadership role in the city-county process to establish and provide funding for the Beacon Homeless Day Shelter. And whereas Alder Person Rumel pushed for protection of urban street trees, advocated for ordinance changes to protect trees during street reconstruction, and proposed increased setbacks to allow canopy trees to thrive. And whereas Alder Person Rumel as council president submitted a letter with recommendations to the Air National Guard during the environmental impact statement review process for sitting F-35s at TruX and raised flags about desperate impacts to Black and Brown communities living nearby, health effects of noise on North Side and East Side residents, and called for remediation of PFOS contaminants on the site. And whereas Alder Person Rumel was a strong supporter of implementing a racial justice and social equity lens to review internal and external city projects and processes, including city budgets. And whereas Alder Person Rumel sponsored the city's Affordable Housing Fund, supported affordable housing projects in District Six and around the city, and adopted the housing-first approach as part of city policy. And whereas Alder Person Rumel worked with staff to improve safety for bicyclists at intersections along the Capital City Trail, improved pedestrian safety at many intersections, and sponsored the Vision Zero Initiative. And whereas Alder Person Rumel served on the Public Market Committee since its inception and worked on the earlier iteration proposed for Judge Doyle Square. And whereas Alder Person Rumel adopted, excuse me, updated the Landmarks Ordinance and served in the Landmarks Ordinance Review Committees I and II. And whereas Alder Person Rumel, as Neighborhood Association President and Alder, participated in the task force that created Central Park, now McPite Park. And whereas Alder Person Rumel participated in the Capital Gateway Build Steering Committee and helped create the Urban Design District Number Eight for the East Washington Avenue corridor. And whereas Alder Person Rumel managed over one hundred public engagement processes for real estate development proposals, street reconstruction, parks and greenway improvements, alcohol licenses and other district issues over many years. And whereas Alder Person Marsha Rumel, through her hard work and dedication to her aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the city of Madison. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Common Council commend and thank Alder Person Marsha Rumel for her dedicated service to her constituents in District Six and to the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Verveer will move. Is there a second? Alder Carter will second. A surfeit of seconds here. We do have registrants. One registered wishing to speak, Bridgette Maniachi of Lexington Ave., to be followed One registrant wishing to speak, Bridgette Montiachi of Lexington Ave.
Hello again. I couldn't help but weigh in here, Marsha. I am so sad to see you leaving the council. You have been such an ally for the East of Smith, the Madison. You were such a partner on revitalizing East Washington Avenue and all of the fights that it took to get that done. You were also a really valuable partner in the project that shall not be named in pushing to get a better project, to push the developers, to push the community, to get a good project that worked. I respect the hell out of you. I miss you. I want to see what amazing things you're going to be doing next. The fact that your district, I always thought District Six was the most insane district of all the twenty districts, and you have been the Alderman for so long with such grace and such patience. And there is sort of not an issue or not a a time that you have not been actively involved as a productive cooperative, you know, member who, you were very good at raising hell in the most thoughtful, productive way possible. And you showed me so much about what was possible to push people, to get better results, and have just beautiful humor and grace about the very trying nature of public service. And so that I raise a drink to you at some point in the near future. And I will have you know I have a painting done by a lovely city of Madison bus driver who moonlights and did a beautiful night scape of East Washington Avenue in the Constellation Building. So thank you for everything you've done for your district and for the city. And I'm very sad to see both you and Shiva leaving as lions or lionesses of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Verveer?
Thank you again, Mayor. First, let me just say to all of the newly elected colleagues and their friends and family, thank you for your patience and understanding as we pay tribute to our departing colleagues. This is a tradition going back many, many decades that the last council meeting of the council term or session is a farewell tribute to our departing colleagues, and then immediately proceeds to the sitting of the new council and the swearing-in of all of the newly elected colleagues. So I want to again thank you all for your patience and understanding as we pay tribute to our dear friends this afternoon. Let me also say that in the interest of time, obviously, we've been asked to not speak and pay tribute to each of our departing colleagues. And I have to admit, it is hard for me, sitting here, biting my tongue, and not asking to be recognized to speak on behalf of each and every one of you that is leaving the council. This is always a very difficult day for me, every biennium, because I believe so deeply in the institution that we've all devoted so much of our time to. And it is a really sad day when we have to say goodbye in a formal way to our departing colleagues. So whether I've had the privilege of serving with you for twenty years or one year, I'm going to miss all of you very much. And I wish I had the ability to speak on each of your behalf's and each of your honoring resolutions this afternoon. But obviously, we've been asked to limit that activity. As I talk about Marsha, I can't help myself but to commend my friend, Shiva Bedar. I have had the honor of serving with countless numbers of colleagues over my, over a quarter century of service in this institution. And I can list on one hand the ones that I would consider giants of the council. I certainly don't consider all council presidents to be in that category. But Shiva and Marsha, I put you in that category. I really do. So it is with a heavy heart and an unearned privilege that I say goodbye to both of you, both former council presidents and both true leaders of this city and this community. Marsha, I never thought that a conversation asking for a bicycle rack on West Gilman Street in front of Rainbow Bookstore Cooperative would lead to this relationship that we've had for well over fifteen years now. But it's a remarkable thing as I think back to it. For those that don't know, Marsha was a longtime staff member of the beloved Rainbow Bookstore Cooperative. And in her role there as a bookseller, approached me as the Alder of the district one day asking for a bicycle rack to be provided in front of the bookstore by the city. I was happy to help to oblige and do that. And that became really, as I say, a lasting friendship. We had much more intimate conversations, and I really grew to respect Marsha tremendously through her civilian, if you will, activism to work hard with many other volunteers in the community to save the beautiful Women's Building on West Gilman Street. Marsha was a leader of the Save the Women's Building movement, along with former colleague here at Liddell Sellers, before Liddell was ever an Alder, and many others in the community. And their civic activism led to the preservation of that beautiful building and in fact, its designation as a city landmark many years ago now. For those that don't know where the Women's Building is and its history, it served the Women's Club of Madison for decades and decades and decades, and was slated to fall to the wrecking balls for student housing back in about 2004 or so, I'd estimate. And ever since this community group moved, stepped forward to save it and that grand architecture there, it's housed restaurants. And every time I go by there, I truly think of you, Marsha. And that real first achievement since we became acquaintances and now friends. Before Marsha was ever elected to the council, I also, as an outside observer, admired her work and tireless dedication to her neighbors as president of her Neighborhood Association, the Marquette Neighborhood Association. She worked hard and truly was trained well for this job that she's now occupied for fourteen years in City Hall. And I do say job, realizing that that entire time, Marsha, you've held a full-time job, either at Rainbow or as a state employee, and I honestly don't know how you do it. It's unbelievable to me how much you've accomplished juggling two full-time jobs. It's already been mentioned in the testimony that the Sixth Aldermanic District, if not the most complex and politically active, certainly is one of the handful that are. And you have shown tremendous, tremendous tireless advocacy for the people and interests of the Sixth Aldermanic District. I feel a little badly for my friend and former colleague and soon-to-be colleague again, Brian Benford. He has huge shoes to fill. You have set such an example, Marsha, of tireless dedication. You are a true public servant. Your accomplishments are many. I could have used a drink of water, time or two, reading the resolution in your honor. Every line of it, every word of it was so true. Your accomplishments are varied, and they are many. I certainly don't have the time to repeat and amplify each of the accomplishments or even most of the accomplishments that were articulated in the resolution honoring your service. But I do want to say that among your lasting legacies that I think of, when I think of Marsha Rommel, indeed, is her dedication, is your dedication to historic preservation. As I mentioned, one of the first issues I came to know you over was historic preservation and saving the Women's Building. You've become an expert on historic preservation, on our landmarks ordinance, indeed, work to rewrite our landmarks ordinance time and time again in our historic preservation plan. I also think of our urban forest and our tree canopy and think of you and your tireless efforts to save our urban forest. And indeed, you won a statewide award for your efforts in that regard. I think of you when I think of all the beautiful public art in our community, especially in the neighborhoods you've represented all these years. I think of you when, and I'm going to miss them very much, and I know it's going to be difficult for Brian to try to continue this tradition, but I think of you each and every weekend when it might be the middle of the night. And again, I don't know how you ever sleep in your tireless energies, but all the many years that you've provided weekly updates to your constituents electronically. I can't imagine how many hours of research and effort that takes, and you've done it for years. Again, often the email comes in the, what most people would consider the middle of the night, when you have a day job to wake up to in a few hours, but you do it week after week, year after year. And it's something that I know many of us will miss, not just your constituents. It's really been a guidebook for many of us in City Hall, and you're to be commended for that. When I think about the city's land use planning, I think of you, Marsha. I think of your insane request of the mayor at the time to serve on the three major land use committees, Landmarks Commission, Plan Commission, and Urban Design Commission, and how you juggled your schedule, especially on Monday evenings running from landmarks to plan, often with Finance Committee in between. Again, I don't know how you always did it. One of the other things that I certainly think about you is when I visit or am going by the Garver Feed Mill. I absolutely, one hundred percent unequivocally believe that if it wasn't for you and your vision, the Garver Feed Mill would not only be preserved, but be the active, beautiful community center that it is in so many respects today. You really leave a tremendous lasting legacy, Marsha, and it's one that so many of us will remember for years and years to come. Also, on a personal note, and I know not everybody might remember this, especially our newer colleagues, but you were a wonderful member of the team the last time I had the privilege of serving as council president. You served as vice president that year, 2016, 2017, obviously. And I can't tell you how much I enjoyed working with you and talking with you above and beyond what we normally had done year after year after year, representing adjacent districts on the council. You were an awesome vice president and president. And one of the best decisions I made was asking you to chair and ably guide the President's Work Group on Police and Community Relations that put forward those thirteen recommendations, most of which have been implemented. I can't believe, and I've said this to you many times, the tremendous tragic coincidence that so many officer-involved deaths have occurred in the Sixth Aldermanic District during your tenure, and how you've ably tried to heal your community that was suffering so much from each of these tragic incidents that occurred, again, in your neighborhoods that you represent. I've always admired you for so many reasons, and that certainly is among the top reasons, is how you have handled what would be a difficult situation happening just once and it happened time and time again in the Sixth District. In conclusion here, I'm going to miss you terribly, Marsha. Very personally, I'm going to miss you terribly. I'm going to miss your commitment to equity and social justice at every turn. I'm going to miss our many conversations. I hope we still remain good friends and we continue to have those conversations even after today. You really are a true public servant. I'm going to miss you so much, and I know all of us will. I know you'll stay involved. I know that your advocacy will continue. I know you won't just be able to return to your day job as a revenue agent and tend your interests and hobbies like your historic postcard collection. I really hope that we continue to see you in City Hall and that you are able to continue your service on city boards, committees, and commissions because you have proven yourself time and time again to be such a committed member of our community, a true public servant. And I hope that that activism, both inside and outside of City Hall, continues. I'll miss you so much, dear friend. Godspeed.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, others have mentioned how that District Six is one of the more complicated and challenging districts in the city. I'd argue that District Thirteen is right up there, and similar in many respects. And it's because of that, when I first thought about applying for the vacancy when former Alder Sarah Eskrich was stepping down, the first person I reached out to was Marsha Rommel. And I had known Marsha going back to that time at Rainbow Books. I first moved to Madison in 1988, and I was living downtown, and I discovered this radical bookstore on Gelman there. And, or Francis, I guess. I can't even remember the name of the street. I apologize for that. But right next to Amy's Cafe, Rainbow Books. And Marsha was there, and we became friends. So when I first decided that I wanted to run for public office, I followed up and spoke with Marsha and got good advice. And she's been an effective mentor to me during this first term, and I'm very grateful. And I too, referencing what was just said by my colleague here. You know, the officer-involved shootings in District Six with the killing of Paula Hena and Tony Robinson. Marsha, you offered a healing presence to the residents who were impacted by that and to the city. And you've really been a wonderful public servant in that regard, always standing for justice, always standing up for what's right. And you've been a healing presence on this council and a good friend to me. And you're going to be missed, you along with Alder Bedar and Alder Kimbo. I feel like there's just a loss of a real commitment to integrity and justice and wisdom. And I'll be calling upon you all for advice in this next term. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Oh, I notice I'd be emotional, and it sure is. You know, I've been privileged to serve District Six in the city of Madison for the last fourteen years. And it's been an honor to work with residents and stakeholders on, you know, all the issues like, as mentioned in the resolution, from development projects to street reconstruction and new parks and police accountability. And Mike mentioned my historic postcard collection. So if you know me, it really should not surprise you that I also save the postcards for all my neighborhood meetings. And I'm not sure I have everyone, because you know, there was a period of time where the council office didn't mail anyone. But I had over probably a hundred neighborhood meetings. So I got pretty good at public engagement and learning how to talk to people and hear their concerns. And that was really one of the most wonderful parts about being Alder, is doing that work on the ground. And we learn so much from the people we serve. And things that you didn't even know about are things that suddenly you're making ordinances about because it's been raised to that level of like, I could do something about that. And so I've done those things, like, and maybe they're not huge things, but I think now you can paint the street because of me changing like the ordinances. But it was like you had to do like special ordinances. It wasn't just any old ordinance. It was a, I don't know the name of it, but the gun, where you have to, you know, have a, anyway, because you're violating state law. But anyway, I served with sixty-one Alders. I counted the other day. And some of, I didn't count somebody who served twice in different districts. So, but I did count the person, and I didn't count the person who served twice as an appointment. But that's a lot of Alders to get to know and have relationships with. And I really enjoyed working with most of you. And many of you have records and legacies that move the needle of progress forward in many ways. And I really respect the body that we serve on together, and I'm proud of what we accomplished. And when I started thinking about this, what I would say tonight, I've been thinking about it for a long time. And, you know, all the people I wanted to thank, which of course I won't get to because that would just be forever. But I really came away with realizing, since I've been elected, we really since I've been elected, we really improved the city in ways, you know, that was changed from when I started. And I think Alder Bedar mentioned this, when I was elected, the council was majority white and male, and now the incoming council is majority black and brown and half women. You know, this change is historic, and I, you know, willing to help you all as you move forward, so please don't hesitate to call on me. And I'm really thrilled that former Alder Brian Benford decided to run after I announced I was not seeking another term. Brian brings excellent skills, knowledge, experience, and a big heart, and I know he'll be a leader on the council and in District Six. And while, you know, thinking back, I haven't agreed with everybody, I want to just kind of highlight all the ways that we improve city practices, starting with the annual budget process. Now, only a few of you were around long enough to remember that we would fight over stuff, you know, at the last minute, all the amendments, like, for example, we fought over sister cities, you know, the small amount of money we give to sister cities wasn't a political issue for many budget years. And there was one year where we fought over whether we should purchase a new coffee urn for the senior center. And happily, through the efforts of, you know, various Alders, including Alder Bedar, we streamlined the budget process so that we weren't nickel and diming us at the end, and that we created a whole process where community development committees, if we decided we wanted to spend extra money on community development, we gave that money for the committee to allocate and not let Alders play favorites with, or, you know, trying to make up for what they thought was a failing of funding for a particular agency, because we know we all work with a lot of great agencies, but you can't let it be kind of like just ad hoc. We needed to have a better policy, and we made it. So I think in some ways, and the budget level were so much better. And then I think of a lot of the big issues we grappled with, and in the resolution, it mentions the hotel committee I served on for Manona Terrace, but we still don't have that darn hotel yet. I mean, I guess it's as close as it's ever been to being built, but that took a lot of work and a lot of discussion on Judge Joe Square, we went through different developers, and, you know, it was kind of a big lift, but hopefully we now are, you know, getting back to where Manona Terrace can serve its purpose. We revised TIF policy three times. I served on a committee once, there was another committee, and then a third one's where we talked about economic development, and so, you know, I think that's really important. And we made more reporting to the Finance Committee about TIF and had a lot more interaction with Alders than had previously existed. We changed the city funding for overture, which both the mayor and Alder Bedar were leaders on at the time, you know, that was a big thing, changing the funding process for that. And then, okay, some of you will remember that we now have a beautiful central library, but there was a period of time where a former mayor thought, maybe we should move it to East, West Washington, but we went through a whole process and it ended up keeping and building a beautiful new central library on the bones of its existing building. And then, because all the Alders on the east side wanted a new library, including former Alder Joe Klosius, we created a planning process to find out how we would site a new library on the east side. And so now, through that process, we have exciting plans for the imagination. Serve. And as also mentioned by Mike and in the resolution, we invested in key corridors and revitalized neighborhoods. You know, we heard about East Washington and shout out to Manny Archie, we did work so hard together to do that work, and also the Alders of District 12, which were former Alder Rhodes Conway and, and, you know, Alder Abbas, that we continue that work, and Alder Palm too. Allied Drive, which is on the agenda tonight for introduction to build some houses, that whole process was a long time in coming. South Park Street, that Alder Evers serves, and Cottage Grove Road, and of course, projects like Garber Feed Mill. We spent a lot of time, like, getting these things right, and I really am proud of how we leveraged the city and the county funds to improve homeless services. And the funding that Beacon Day Center, now you take it for granted, but I can't tell you how many different locations that was supposed to be at, and there always is that part of the executive branch of both city and county government that announces things in press releases, and then the Alder finds out, and it's just like, what? But anyway, that's, I guess, a part of what you get to learn about going forward. And then, again, back to the community development, we changed how we fund neighborhood centers, and we established the more nimble funding for emergency needs, which Shiva helped lead. And we started focusing on youth and providing job programs and mentoring and life skills. And then I think one of the turning points was the 2014 Race to Equity Report issued by the Wisconsin Council for Family, Children and Families, and it pointed out the depth and breadth of racial disparities in our progressive city and called out the existence of two Madisons. Now, I always think now about two Madisons, and we really need one Madison, we need to, like, still work on that, and this report prompted Alders to add racial equity and social justice criteria to city budget and policy decisions, and this was a huge sea change that we've embraced as a city, and I'm so proud of that. And one of the, like, results of that directive was on the Public Market Development Committee, on which I served, where we got the message from council that you need to, like, apply the Res J lens to what you're doing, and so we did. And I'm so proud that we worked with our staff and the consultants to create that market-ready program, which was a really innovative idea to prepare people of color and immigrant-owned businesses to open up in the public market. So now we have a cohort ready to participate once the market opens, and this model, this program has become a model for other city initiatives. So, again, you Alders going forward, please keep the promise of the public market to these business owners. And then, and I know I'm gonna go on a bit, and I apologize, but I thought a lot about, like, this work that we've done, and the upsurge of gun violence incidents, we, the council recognized and started to talk about how violence prevention should be seen as a public health issue, not just a criminal justice issue. And we started investing in peer support programs, and, you know, former Alder Motiques and Matt Fair were leaders there, and they really pushed the then-mayor Soglan to start to work on that, and we've been, hopefully, somewhat unevenly, but devoted and renewed devotion to those kind of programs. I think the Affordable Housing Fund was a big innovation, but as the council, we pushed it even more. We said, you know, we want to add money so that we can fund housing projects that aren't just ones that the for-profit developers have access to, you know, seeking Rita Section 42 tax credits. And just this year, we started, and, you know, we RFP'd and allocated money for co-ops and nonprofits to start using those funds, and this is a really important component of how our toolkit, if you will. And again, and part of that toolkit will also be updating our land banking policy. You know, we did successfully buy Union Coroner's Parcel and Don Miller, and those were a product of the crash in 2007, so we need to update the policy so we can have a more broad-based approach to how we can use land banking to provide not only job development but affordable housing. And then, if some of you recall, our first Zoom meeting at the councils, we voted to oppose the beddown of the F-35 fighter jets at Truax. This was something that I spent a lot of time on with all the Alders on the east and north side, and I, you know, while, you know, Manny told us, this is not something that you have power over, we still have the power to communicate and represent the needs of our constituents to other levels of government, and hopefully, we don't know what's gonna happen with F-35s, but it's something that I hope that you all stay on top of, and we need to also work on the pollution and make sure that US Air Force and pays, cleans up that site, I mean, not let it, you know, be delayed forever. And then I guess one of the major things I've been dealing with is the police, is the officer-involved shootings, as Mike mentioned. This, you know, started for me with, it started before 2012 with the police shooting of Polly Heenan, but by the time Tony Robinson was killed in 2015, we'd already had stuff around the country erupt with Michael Brown's killing, and so we started down a pathway that it took five years and longer to pursue this work, and I'm really proud of what we've done. We created that ad hoc group, and we also created that Alder Work Group, and have pushed forward on improvements, which we voted on some of them in the last year, the Independent Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board, so these are things that you will still need to keep an eye on as future Alders, and especially, I mean, there's some things that can be, or only be solved at the state level, but, you know, you, the new council will have to deal with body cameras, and so that is, you know, a decision that's coming up for you soon. I have so much more, and I feel like I shouldn't just keep going, but I do hope that you will reconsider the idea of a task force, for a local task force, to deal with PFOS. I had this idea to create a clearinghouse, and I didn't implement it, because at that point in time, and it was 2019, Governor Evers instituted a statewide initiative around changing rules about water quality and created his own multi-agency group, so I thought, well, maybe they'll take care of it, but I really feel like we failed people and we haven't, like, done, you know, shine a light on what's going on and making sure people know all the ways that we need to protect our water, including not just PFOS, but all the other kind of things that pollute our water, you know, PCEs, lead, chloride, hexavalent, chromium, you know, phosphorus, pharmaceuticals, et cetera. So we still have to be the water protectors moving forward. And so, you know, I think it came clear with the kind of committees I've served on that I turn into a, I'm a planning geek, and I think a lot about our local democracy and how we engage people through planning and even just through the development review process, and this is something that is coming up for, before you and through the zoning code proposal changes, and so I hope that you will take a close look at how it is that we move forward on addressing affordable housing, that while we do need more housing overall, I think we just need to be mindful that there are social justice consequences of changing our mixed-use zoning districts, and I, you know, I have a whole spiel about, that I'll save for the future decision-makers about how zoning is a right to intensify land in some cases, and that's a way to make money, and the gentrification impacts of that is something that is really, something that I think you need to carefully look at and not just say, oh, we need more housing. Well, yes, but we don't want people who can't afford to live here anymore. So, you know, I wish everyone the best of luck, the mayor and all the incoming Alders and returning Alders. I think city staff, you know, they provide excellent service to Alders, they make us look good, you know, you're all gonna eventually have a thing where somebody emails you, what about this thing, right, you know, that kind of level of the weeds, you say, oh, I'll email so-and-so, you know, in streets or engineering or wherever, and they come and do something about it, like, right away, and then that person, that constituent's like, wow, that was really good, and you're like, yeah, got really great staff, but they help us look good, they help us do a great job, and so, and there's so many of you, and I sent an email to some of you thanking you, saying I loved working with you, and I did, I really enjoyed working with all our staff, and I enjoyed, you know, meeting everybody that I got to meet through this whole thing, you know, think of all the people you don't know that you're gonna know in a year, it's kind of cool and amazing. And so I do, I will remain a devoted servant to the city. The city has so much promise, it's such an international city, and that is like one of the things that makes it such a wonderful place, but we need to have the commitment to make sure it is a wonderful place for everyone, and so I know you will take up the task of, you know, a commitment in making a better world for all of us, and good luck, and I'll be around. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, a unanimous vote is recorded on item number four, and we'll come to item number five, which is Legis 65081, Honoring Resolution Commending and Thanking Alder Person Max Prestigiacomo for His Dedicated Service to the Constituents in District Eight and to the City of Madison. Alder Rommel, would you read the honoring resolution, please?
Give a moment. Sorry, it went away somehow from my screen. Commending and thanking Alder Person Max Prestigiacomo for his dedicated service to the constituents in District Eight and to the City of Madison. Whereas Alder Person Max Prestigiacomo was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 2nd, 2019, I think it's supposed to be 2020, and whereas Alder Person Prestigiacomo served on the Downtown Coordinating Committee, Joint Campus Area Committee, Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee, Madison Food Policy Council, President's Work Group to Review Council Communication Tools and Processes, and Sustainable Madison Committee. And whereas Alder Person Prestigiacomo was involved in banning facial recognition and instituting other police oversight measures, and whereas Alder Person Prestigiacomo was instrumental in creating an independent campus area neighborhood association, and whereas Alder Person Prestigiacomo sponsored the decriminalization of marijuana, and whereas Alder Person Prestigiacomo often used the platform of an Alder to support successful efforts at UW Madison and other outside institutions affecting students in the campus area. And whereas Alder Person Max Prestigiacomo, through his hard work and dedication to his Alder Manic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents in the City of Madison. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank Alder Person Max Prestigiacomo for his dedicated service to his constituents in District Eight and to the City of Madison.
Thank you. Alder Rommel will move. Is there a second? Alder, Vice President Abbas will second. We have one registrant, Alder-elect Juliana Rose Bennett of West Johnson.
Hi, Maxie. I gotta hype you up. Thank you so much. I think there's a lot to be said in what you've accomplished in this year and how you finish it off, and I know I'm personally abundantly thankful, you know, for you recognizing a step aside to allow, like, people of color to come on council, and I'm here joined with my dad, and he thanks you as well. I met you through organizing, and throughout this campaign, you've been an immense help, and I'm so grateful to come to know you as a friend. This, we all know this has been a tough year, especially for students, and you've certainly used this position as District Eight Alder as a platform to amplify voices of underserved communities, and that's something that I think all of us on council and all of us in Madison should take heed in and learn from. Thank you for standing up for us, and thank you for standing up for District Eight. You're awesome, and I love you, Max. See you soon.
Thank you, Alder-elect. There, that is our registrants on item five. Are there Alders that wish to speak? Vice President Abbas?
Yes. Want to say thank you to Max. Before Max become Alder, I met with Max on Before Max become alder, I met with Max when discussing about environmental issue. He's a true activist about environment and also raising voices about, as Alder-elect Juliana mentioned, about the students, either it's a UW issue, environment issue, also on Madison Sustainability Commission. I appreciate your role on environment and sustainability. It was great to work with you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Alder Prestigiacomo.
Thank you all, thank you, Alder Abbas and Alder-elect. Unfortunately, I have a midterm, or sorry, a final that is happening literally right now, so I won't take that long. I'm straddling meetings. Yeah, none of us expected to be here and I, I feel like I was thrown into the ring a little bit. So I just, I just want to thank you, all my colleagues who guided me and have been friends and allies on the council. And especially thank you to the staff for bearing with me and, you know, also helping me learn and halfway through a term where everyone else has already caught up. You know, I've learned so much from you all and I'd do it again in a heartbeat if I could. I do not regret a thing. It's an understatement to say like that I'm excited for Juliana and District Eight as a whole. I think we've got an amazing person and I think campus and council as a whole is lucky to have her. I cannot wait to see what the next council does. I think we've got a real opportunity here. I guess I'll just kind of end by saying like, everything is about to change. You know, our youth are tired and marching in the streets and, you know, questioning every established system and norm and time is like quite literally running out. I think addressing every crisis we face is going to take more than just understanding the system that we live in. It's going to take organizers, people who want to work within and outside of it, engage with stakeholders far and wide. So thank you again to all. I guess I'll end by saying I, I'm really hopeful for this next council. I think, if anything, this next council is more equipped than ever to think seven generations ahead, as the saying goes. So yeah, thank you all and good luck to all the future Alders. I'm so excited to see what you guys all do.
Thank you, Alder. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing none, it will be so recorded. And we'll move on to item number six, which is Legis 65087, an honoring resolution commending and thanking Alder Person Paul Skidmore for his dedicated service to the constituents in District Nine and to the City of Madison. Alders Harrington McKinney and Carter, I'm not sure which order you want to go in.
Alder McKinney will go first.
Alder Harrington McKinney, would you read the beginning of the resolution, please?
Madam Mayor, my laptop just went out. Did you just call for the one for Skidmore?
Yes, Alder Harrington McKinney, I did.
Thank you. Whereas Alder Person Paul Skidmore was first elected to the Madison Common Council on April the 3rd, 2001, and was reelected nine times. And whereas Alder Person Skidmore served on the ad hoc, ad hoc task force on the structure of government, TFOGS, Final Report Implementation Work Group, Administrative Review, Alcohol License Review Committee, Alcohol License Review Committee Revocation Subcommittee, Ad Hoc Committee to Investigate Alcohol Use in Parks and Central City, Board of Park Commissioners, Board of Public Works, CDA Housing Operations Subcommittee, City County Liaison Committee, Common Council Executive Committee, Common Council Organizational Committee, Community Development Authority, Disability Rights Commission, Facilities, Programs and Fees Subcommittee, Finance Committee, Harbor Building Reuse Committee, ICE Arena Ad Hoc Committee, Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee, Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, Pedestrian Bicycle Motor Vehicle Commission, Ad Hoc Task Force on Pesticide and Use Policy, President's Work Group to Develop Citywide Surveillance Equipment and Data Management Policies, Public Safety Communications Center Board, 911 Center Board, a joint city-county board, including serving as chair for one term, Public Safety Review Committee, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, Small Business Enterprise Appeals Committee, Sustainable Design and Energy Committee, Task Force on the Structure of City Government, Transportation Ordinance Review Ad Hoc Committee, Verona Road West Beltline Highway Advisory Committee, and Warner Park Community Recreation Center Advisory Subcommittee, and...
And whereas during his 20-year tenure, Alder Skidmore worked with four mayors, Sue Baumann, Dave Shalavix, Paul Soglin, and Satya Rose Conway, four chiefs of police, Richard Williams, Noble Ray, Mike Koval, and Sean Barnes, and three city attorneys, Eunice Gibson, Mike May, and Mike Haas. And whereas while it is difficult to summarize the accomplishments over a period of 20 years of service, Alder Skidmore's most significant contributions include public safety, continuous support for adequate funding, adequate funding for MPD and MFD, equipment, staffing, and operations, supporting development of fire station 12, 13, and 14, supporting the development of five MPD district offices, providing public support for the police officers, firefighters, EMTs who protect our city at all times, day and night. Public Works, supporting and sponsorship for major improvements to Junction Road, Pleasant View Road, Mineral Point Road, support for the installation of many traffic safety improvements, including traffic signal stop signs, traffic common device, support for public, for park planning and development projects throughout Madison, support and sponsorship for the planning, design, and implementation of many storm water management projects, greenway improvements, and general work projects throughout Madison. Planning and development, support for good orderly development of residential, commercial, and office areas in the Ninth District. Key developments include Attic Angel Campus, All Saint Campus, Paragon Campus, Tree Lane Family Apartments, Oak, Old Oak, I mean, Old Sock Trail, Business Park, Silicone Prairie Business Park, and West Town Mall and its surrounding businesses. And whereas Alder Person Paul Skidmore, through his hard work and dedication to his automatic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituent in the City of Madison. Now be it resolved that the mayor and the common council come in and thank Alder Person Skidmore for his dedicated service to his constituents in District Nine and to the City of Madison.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney will move and Alder Carter will second the resolution. We have no registrants wishing to speak. There are Alders who wish to speak? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I took this opportunity to speak on behalf of Paul. When I was elected in 2015, I approached Alder Skidmore and he was not receptive and so I kind of left him alone. But over the past, since I was elected, I got an opportunity to know the man because he allowed us to get in. Over 20 years' service says something that he knows the city and he's committed to the city. Over the past two years, it has been an honor to work with Alder Skidmore because being over there in his space, I got a chance to know the man. I got a chance to know his commitment. I got a chance to know he's a man of indelible faith and integrity. And we did not always agree, let me be very clear, but he always stepped forward with such a strong sense of integrity. You always knew what side he was on, even if that side was not your side. But he always showed up with a great sense of integrity and I appreciate the man that I got a chance to know over the past two years, Paul Skidmore. Alder Skidmore, I will miss serving with you. I look forward to, you know, what your district will be achieving in the future. But for the 20 years that you served the city and served your district with such integrity, I want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter.
Thank you. I, I just want to say two things. And one is you can't judge a book by its cover. And I remember when, when Alder Cheek said to me, I was wearing a pair of shoes that donate a percentage to the Humane Society and they had dogs on it and he goes, God, I didn't know you had a sense of humor. And I said to him, I believe I'm funny. And he did not reply. So that was a testament right there. My point is, is that I have gotten to know Alder Skidmore. And when I read his, his proclamation, how do you sum up 20 years of accomplishments? Number one, being an alder takes up a lot of time, a lot of your social life, a lot of your family life. And you're squeezing it in between family, work, and representing the city in a manner that the city constituents and the city deserves. And I've gotten to know Alder Skidmore and I want to say to him, job well done. Job well served. We thank you for your 20 years, as we would thank someone who serves for four months or six months and have to leave because of other issues. I am amazed at all of the committees that one can serve in 20 years. And one can still have that zest to continue, not just the first year, not just the fifth year, but the 10th, the 15th to get to 20 years. And Alder Revere, I'll say the same thing to you, so take note. It is amazing because it's the testament of what we do as aldermen and the, and the joy that we feel serving our city, our government, our mayor. And I commend you, Alder Skidmore, for a long service legacy for this city. And for the alder that is stepping in, these are big shoes. These are big shoes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Carter. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording? Oh, excuse me, Alder Skidmore. Thank you for raising your hand.
Thank you. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as the alder of the Ninth District, City of Madison, Wisconsin, for the past 20 years. I've had the opportunity to work with four mayors, four chiefs of police, three city attorneys, dozens of Alders, and hundreds of dedicated city staff members to keep our district and cities a safe and pleasant place to live, live, work, and enjoy. There have been many people that have influenced my life and helped to shape my character and commitment to public service. I'd like to mention a few former city staff and Alders who've helped me develop my integrity, commitment to public service, and to solidify my core beliefs and philosophy. In 1970, I moved to Madison when Paul Soglin became my alder. And over a period of time, I developed a deep respect for him, his commitment to public service, his honesty, his integrity, and above all, his energy for doing this job. He became mayor. I helped on his elections and reelections. We became friends and he became my mentor. And I've stayed close to him this past 50 years and look forward to more years together. He instilled in me a great sense of what public service is and, and a couple of things that were very important and they, they were the core for me. I can recall, he appointed me to an opening on the Park Commission in 1993 and he said, we may agree, we may disagree, but we will always disagree agreeably. And he also said, I don't ever want to read your name in the paper over a ethics complaint. And he never did. And I'm pleased by that. I'm also going to mention Eunice Gibson, the first city attorney that I worked with when I was an alder, but I started working with her before that. She and I had a committee that we helped to train incoming Alders and committee members. She had a brilliant knowledge of the law and ethics and I learned a lot from her. And to this day, we're friends. We go to church together and I just saw her yesterday, wonderful person. Mike Koval. I knew he was a cop for a long time. He had a great reputation in training and he seemed to really enjoy being a sergeant and in training. And I loved talking with him. And when he became chief, I was delighted. He is a man of deep faith, as I am. He has an honesty and integrity. He was always known as a cop's cop and he enjoyed working in policing. He had the respect of his peers. He had the respect of the people that served him and the people around him. And I, I really enjoyed that. And he was always willing to speak up and speak out. He spoke the truth even when that was to his detriment. I'm cut from the same cloth. There's a couple of former city staff members, department heads, that, that I particularly respect. One was Larry Nelson, the other one was Dan Staype. Larry was the Director of Public Works and if you ever worked with him or served under him, you know how much that man knew about how to run a city. And he knew everything there seemed to, to, to be necessary to, to run this city. In fact, once he told me, he said, all of you politicians could go away and the city could run this place just fine. And I came to believe him. Dan Staype was the first parks director that I worked under when I was first appointed in 1993. Great person. He had been there a long time and he had a great love for parks and a desire to do the right thing and to make this a wonderful park system. He did, and I respected that greatly. One of the things that I'm reminded of when I think of those two gentlemen are is how much they knew about what was really important to the city. And, and I got to know a lot of city staff members in Public Works, engineering, parks, streets, water, and other. The frontline workers that are out there on the streets, meeting the public, what a great group of people. I've known many of them still and they're the, the people that most of our constituents see when they, when they talk about what happens in the city. They pick up the trash, they plow the snow, they keep the lawns mowed. And above all, they're the police, there are many that... And above all, they're the police, there are many that keep our city safe. Finally, I'd like to mention, you know, of the past people, two alders that influenced me greatly. One is Dorothy Barker, the North Side, and Ken Golden from the Near West Side. I would say that they were on different ends of the political spectrum, but they had something in common. They had a great respect for the institution of alder, and they had a great respect for each other and their colleagues. And I can recall them both saying that you can be in disagreement, but you can disagree with the position but not the person, and that there was a collegiality that existed then that I believe is long gone. I miss them, and I miss those days. I would also like to mention a few current city staff and alders who I feel have the same commitment to honesty, integrity, and public service, and they share my core beliefs and philosophy. First, I want to give an acknowledgement to Assistant Police Chief Vic Wall. He was the assistant chief that took over for Mike Koval when Mike stepped down and took early retirement. And he served admirably, with distinction, in a very tough situation, and I'm grateful that he is still with us. He is very intelligent, articulate, and he's a good cop, and I'm very grateful we have him on the force. I'm going to mention two captains, but there are hundreds of police officers in this force that I have a great deal of respect for, but I can't mention them all. That's Captain Tim Patton of the West District, Captain Jason Friedman of Midtown. I've gotten to know them very well over the last several years. I've had an opportunity to work with them in the jobs that they do, how they protect the city, how they do it with a smile, with dedication. They keep getting up and doing it over and over again, under duress. And I'm grateful to them, and I'm grateful to all of the police officers and others that keep the city safe. I'd like to call out Chief Stephen Davis of Fire. He's got a real commitment. He's a lifer in the fire department. He rose through the ranks. He's the chief, and I love his candor. I like his honesty and integrity, and he will speak the truth even if it makes enemies. He represents a great fire department. There's a wonderful group of EMTs, firefighters, and others that serve and protect the city 24/7. I have great admiration for them. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Alders Barb McKinney and Sherry Carter. I have a great deal of respect for their integrity, their honesty, their dedication to the city, their commitment to do the right thing, even if it's politically unpopular and they incur the wrath of others. I'm very grateful to have their friendship. I may be leaving the council, but I plan to continue my public service in Madison and elsewhere. I will continue to advocate for public safety and assist and advocate for police officers, firefighters, and EMTs who keep us safe and secure. I will continue to advocate for good orderly development and for the businesses that are the economic engine that provide employment opportunities, goods and services, and the property tax base that helps to fund city operations. Finally, I will be available to the friends and citizens of the Knight District to assist them as they navigate through issues they have with City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Now, it's appropriate to say it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favoring the honoring resolution, and we will move on to item number seven, which is Legis star 65008, commending and thanking alderperson Zachary Hennig for his dedicated service to constituents in District 10 and to the city of Madison. Alder Balday, would you read the resolution, please?
I would be happy, Mayor, and with honor as a matter of reality. So thank you. Commending and thanking alderperson Zachary Hennig for his dedicated services to the constituents in District 10 and to the city of Madison. Whereas alder Zach Hennig was elected to Madison Common Council on April 2, 2019, and whereas alderperson Hennig served on the Board of Park Commissioners, City County Liaison Committee, Common Council Executive Committee, Committee Development Block Grant Committee, Downtown Coordinating Committee, and Task Force on Municipal Golf in Madison Parks. And whereas alderperson Hennig worked through the significant increase of development projects in and around District 10, the largest and most technical being Westgate move. And whereas alder Hennig contributed greatly through his Board of Parks Commissioners work, particularly, let me repeat, whereas alderperson Hennig contributed greatly through his Board of Park Commissioners work, particularly the imagining of golf in Madison. And whereas alderperson Hennig brought Common Council decisions to District 10 residents who faced opposing input. And whereas alderperson Hennig brought realism, honesty, respect, and bravery to the position of alder and work with alders, city staff, residents to find common ground and build productive relationships. And whereas alderperson Zach Hennig, through his hard work and dedication to his automatic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank alderperson Zachary Hennig for his dedicated service to his constituents in District 10 and to the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday will move the resolution. Is there a second? Alder Vice President Abbas will second. Are there alders who wish to speak? Vice President Abbas?
Thank you very much. One similarity I have to mention between me and alderperson Hennig is, we both have little kids, small kids. And I really want to say thanks to your wife and to your family for really supporting you because you have a newborn baby during the council. And as a father and as an alder, I know how hard it is to serve while you have small kids at home. So thank you very much as a father and as a community. Those who have kids, we all want to say you thank you very much for your service in the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll be very brief because it has been a long time, but I just want to say a little bit about alder Hennig and how me and him became very close friends, allies, but, you know, trusting each other as well as we do the city work that we all opted to do. I first met alder Hennig when he was running, and the two of us were at an interview for endorsement and things like that. And so we had a very good conversation during that interaction. And since then, we developed trust, friendship, but also commitment to the same work, basically. He is an excellent guy, somebody, I mean, these are the kind of people who really are designed for community service. I also served with him on the Community Development Block Grant Committee. He's a very dedicated servant. He's one of those people who will come to meetings 100% prepared. But I also appreciated the fact that particularly on the committees that we serve together, alder Hennig will bring things that I always will not think about. And it always remind me of diversity, but also his commitment to really doing the work that is needed before you get to committee meetings and things like that. So I'll definitely miss him at the council, but I am looking forward to, you know, continuing this work outside of the council. Alder Hennig, thank you for your service to your District 10, but also to the city of Madison. I really, really enjoyed working with you like there's nothing like it. So thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter, we've been sticking to two per alder.
Just want to say thank you for your service, Alder Hennig, and it's been a pleasure to be your friend.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Hennig?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say thank you to the residents of District 10 who put their faith in me. It's been an honor to be able to listen and represent you on the council. Thank you to the staff, public servants, who tirelessly work for the betterment of the city with an unrivaled depth and breadth of knowledge, a few of whom have really stood out for me in my tenure. Jim O'Keefe and Lynette Rhodes, they lead CDD with grace and proficiency. With my service on CDBG, I've gotten to know them very well and really appreciate their willingness to discuss topics, reach out, and collaborate. Brian Johnson, I think, is one of the most unsung heroes in the city. He does an amazing job of energetically and accurately connecting the city residents to the services least recognized and most noticed when missing, that's streets. Eric Nepp and Lisa Lashinger, who through my work on the parks, provided a rudder to the parks and provide vision to a department which puts Madison as a leader in the United States. Heather Stoudt and Colin Punt and Kevin Furkaw, who really gave me a basis for navigating through a number of development projects in the district, a district that hasn't seen that historically. Jason Friedman and Lori Schalecki worked tirelessly to keep our district safe and residents up on incidents that were happening in the city. I want to give a thank you to my fellow alders, every one of which who sacrificed their time and significant emotional and mental capacity for the representation of your districts. I wanted to call out especially to Alders McKinney, Balday, Carter, Abbas, and Verveer. You were valued mentors to me, and I can't thank you enough. Most important, I want to thank my children, Ezekiel Obadiah and Araketa, for their continuous giggles and smiles to brighten my mood. They're very excited to have their dad back for bedtimes. And lastly, to my wife Corinne, who graciously puts the needs of the district before her own. The past year has been difficult for everyone, but I have particular empathy for those families with young children. I never would have been able to fulfill the duties of this position without the unending support of my wife Corinne. So thank you to all alders. No one goes into this with themselves put first, and I really respect everyone here for, and especially my replacement, for stepping up and putting the needs of the district before their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Hennig. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution and come to item number eight, which is Legis star 65083, an honoring resolution commending and thanking alderperson Mike Tierney for his dedicated service to the constituents in District 16 and to the city of Madison. President Carter, will you read the resolution, please?
Yes, whereas on July 24, 2018, the Madison Common Council appointed Mike Tierney to fill the remainder of alderperson Denise Demar's term. And whereas alder Mike Tierney was elected to a full term April 2, 2019. And whereas alderperson Tierney served on the Ad hoc Landmarks Ordinance Review Committee, the Ad hoc Task Force on the Structure of City Government, TFOG, Final Report and Implementation Work Group, Board of Public Works, City County Homeless Issues Committee, Common Council Executive Committee, Early Childhood Care and Education Committee, Economic Development Committee, Ho-Chung Nation, City of Madison Joint Planning Committee, Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, MPO, Sustainable Madison Committee, Transportation Commission, and Water Utility Board. And whereas alderperson Tierney advocated for an ambulance at Fire Station Number 14 and for Engine 14 to carry paramedics and medical equipment. And whereas alderperson Tierney worked with Madison Fire Department to ensure paramedic serving Station 14 were made aware of the unique medical needs of the district residents and were provided with training to meet those needs. And whereas alderperson Tierney worked with city staff to facilitate development in District 16 and elsewhere in Madison to create construction and family-supporting jobs for Madison residents. And whereas alderperson Tierney, having witnessed the aftermath of a serious traffic accident, including an accident with a fatality, supported alterations to Highway 12 and 18 at the intersection of Mill Pond Road and Highway AB. And whereas alderperson Tierney worked with the Ho-Chung Nation, whose ancestral land he lives on today, and supported the expansion of this facility in District 16 that will help people from Wisconsin and around the world to learn more about the Ho-Chung people. And whereas alderperson Mike Tierney, through his hard work and dedication to his automatic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents in the city of Madison. Now there be a resolve that the mayor and common council come in and thank alderperson Tierney for his dedicated service to his constituents in District 16 and the city of Madison.
Thank you, President Carter.
And I have, oh, go ahead.
Are there alders that wish to speak? Seeing none, President Carter?
Yes, I have words from Mike, who is in a proceeding at the Capitol. He wanted to extend his appreciation for the proclamation and many thanks to all the employees of the city of Madison, who he's had the privilege of working with the last few years. It would be much appreciated. And congratulations on not only the election of his successor, but also congratulations to all the new alders. He will miss us, reoccurring alders, and he will be close by for anyone who needs to seek his advice.
Thank you, President Carter. So President Carter will move. Is there a second? Vice President Abbas will second. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, record that unanimous vote and come to item nine, which is Legis star 65079, an honoring resolution commending and thanking alderperson Samba Balday for his dedicated service to the constituents in District 17 and to the city of Madison. Alder Harrington McKinney, would you read the resolution, please?
Madam Mayor, it will be my honor to read this, and I share this with his wife Batu. Whereas alderperson Samba Balday was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 7, 2015. And whereas alderperson Balday served on the Board of Park Commissions, City County Liaison Committee, Common Council Executive Committee, Community Development Block Grant Committee, Community Development Division Conference Committee, Digital Technology Committee, Jeffrey Clay Ellinger Civility and Public Discourse Award Committee, Finance Committee, Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, MPO, President's Work Group to Develop Citywide Surveillance Equipment and Data Management Policies, and Sister City Collaboration Committee. And whereas alderperson Balday was elected by his peers to serve as Vice President of the Common Council from 2017 to 2018, and as President of the Common Council from 2018 to 2019. And whereas in 2017, alderperson Balday organized a citywide Know Your Rights rally against President Trump's immigration ban, which was attended by over 3,000 people. And whereas alderperson Balday played a leading role in the creation of the New Rindell Library Imagination Center. And whereas alderperson Balday helped establish the Equity Business Initiative and the Commercial Owner and the Commercial Ownership Assistance Program. And whereas Alder Balday was instrumental in increasing funding for the Madison Childcare Program. And whereas Alder Person Balday ensured community input into the intensive development of the Far East Side. And whereas Alder Balday, Samba Balday, through his hard work and dedication to his automatic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the City of Madison. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank Alder Samba Balday for his dedicated service to his constituents in District 17 and to the City of Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney will move. Is there a second?
Second.
President Carter will second. We do have registrants wishing to speak, starting with Bob Schaefer of Cottonwood Circle, to be followed by Kaba Ba.
Thank you again for the honor of working and contributing to this. That I have worked with Samba as my Alder and as my friend. And that I want to thank him again for all the things that he's done to help our district. And that I want to wish him and his family love and good spirits and success in his new position as a state representative.
Thank you. Our next registration is Kaba Ba of North Hancock Street.
You may have to press star six on your phone to unmute. And star six to unmute yourself.
While we're waiting, Kaba Ba, if you can, press star six on your phone to unmute. I think we need you to do that to be heard. And while we're waiting, I will ask the three Alders who currently have their hands up to speak, if one of you would defer to the other two so that we can stick to two Alders per honoring resolution, please.
Madam Mayor, I will defer. I'll lower my hand because I'll get emotional in speaking on behalf of Alder Balday, and I'll lower my hand.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Kaba Ba, I've... There you go. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize for not connecting quickly. I am on the move right now. But I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of Samba. Samba Balday is a good friend of mine, and we go all the way back. I wanted to take this moment to recognize this accomplishment and the work that he has done, particularly in our community, to bring about change and inspire some of us to participate in this democracy. And I am definitely one of the people that he has inspired to really engage the city at multiple levels, which I am very grateful for. Samba and I go way back. I'm also thankful to a lot of Alders that are actually living today. But Samba definitely touches my heart. We are friends, and I will be in touch with him and will keep working together in this community to keep bringing about change. But I didn't want this moment to go without recognizing what he has done for our community and what he continues to do. And I thank you all for the opportunity to briefly speak on his behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you very much. It is absolutely an honor to speak for my friend, a mentor, colleague, Samba Balday. Five years ago, I met with Samba in the City of Madison as an immigrant. He really motivates us, all of us as immigrants. So, Samba, really thank you to you from all the immigrants from Africa, from South Asia, also from Muslim community. You are a true leader for our community as well. And when I met him, I was super passionate about sustainability, some other topics. And he really guided me and showed me the direction, how I can bring those opinions and policy into action. And if I am here, I will definitely give a credit to Samba Balday. Also, on a personal note, I, as a friend, I learned he's extremely humble, a very sweet person, very thoughtful, very honest. And I learned a lot, even on the council floor and outside the council floor. And also, as an immigrant, there are a lot of barriers for people from, especially who are first-generation immigrants who move into this country, to learn about how the system works. And there's a lot of discrimination in financial system. So, you even cannot get any credit. You have weak credit score or low credit history score. So, navigating those things and people like Samba Balday, who help our community immensely and educate us about how we can navigate within an institution and how we can bring our voices. So, I am very, very grateful for your leadership and also for your commitment and also giving a lot of your family time to your own constituent, to City of Madison, and also for greater immigrant community, especially in the Muslim community. I am very grateful and thankful, and I am gonna, absolutely gonna miss you on a common council. Thank you very much for your great service to the community.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Alder Hennig.
Thank you, Mayor. Perseverance, persistence, conviction, and sincerity are the highest honors and traits that I can think of in a person. Samba consistently exhibits these characteristics in everything that he does. Every instance that I've experienced with him in committees, in council, and speaking personally with him or his family. I can't speak highly enough for him. When his constituents speak out on a topic, he listens. He brings them to the larger council and continues to fight for his constituents, no matter what the odds. So, I've been impressed with you, Samba. Your ability to verbalize the ideas and thoughts and methods with which you think that those concepts can be brought forth with. I've appreciated it. I appreciate you. And thank you for all of your service and sacrifice for the district and the city.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me just do this a little bit.
Alder Balday, we've lost your video.
Yep, so I just want to take a break for a minute before I start talking, just to make sure I'm in order. But anyway, thank you. Thank you to all of you who spoke on my behalf. Thank you to all my colleagues, to my outgoing colleagues, to the incoming Alders. Sometimes I am very emotional, particularly when people talk about me. It's very moving. I generally don't like to hear people talk about me. But I just want to say thank you to all of you for saying what you say. I would then say, thank you to District 17 for giving me the opportunity in 2015 to serve in this august body. When I was running in 2015, it was very rare to see an African immigrant, a Muslim, a Black person run for any elected office and win. And so, that being said, I want to thank those who believed in me at the time, those who supported me at the time, and those who never deviated from being a part of my team all the way to the end, Kaba, Gary, and others, Sue Pastore and others. They've given me their best in terms of the opportunity to serve my community. Sometime, I'm very passionate about things and very resolute in the things that I believe in. And so, you know, in that case, I have rough heads with some people. But the reality is, I take it to my job and I leave it there. I do not personalize any of these encounters with my colleagues. I believe we are all doing this in the service of our community, in the service of our city, but in the service of humanity. And so, if I talk to you in a way that is not seem to be positive or that you take offense, I never meant to be offensive to any one of you. If anything, I see it as a job, and I would have never come across your path if it was not our commitment to community service. So, that being said, I would advise particularly the new Alders to reach out to each and every Alder person. I will ask the same thing of my colleagues who are staying. Do not judge people by the cover. Do not judge people by whatever people tells you about them. Find ways to go and learn about those people. Reach out to them, talk to them. The city is very challenging. There are a lot of things that are happening around the city, but around the United States as a matter of reality. And so, if you want to take the city council through partisan politics, you cannot solve these big problems. So, I would say, please, reach out to each and every Alder person. Talk to them and try and understand them. Do not judge each other. That is the advice I have for the new Alders, but also those who are staying. You know, you can have good political allies today, but reality is political alliances do not last long. But if you build human-to-human relationships, those are very likely to last for a very, very, very long time. I would also like to take the moment to thank Gary, who is my successor. Gary, I think, will bring a wealth of knowledge to the council. His experience and exposure to particularly developing countries, I think, is close to him, his service in the military, his commitment to his community. But his drive for public service, I think, will make him a very good representative for District 17. So, Gary, I really appreciate you putting your heart in and all the work that you are intending to do for the district. Count me as your supporter, count me as your mentor, and then you can always count on me on anything that you think I can be of help with. You know, I can name names in terms of the city, but I just want to say thank you to all the city staff. I want to say thank you to the council staff. Like I said, I can be very resolute and so, and in many cases, I struggle to take no for no. But that is all in good faith. So, I want to thank this council staff, but I also want to thank the city staff, particularly the directors that I've worked with. Jim O'Keefe, I have worked with the longest at the Community Development Block Grant Committee. You know, we always give each other a hard time, but at the end of the day, we all understand that this is in an effort to make our city a better place. So, to the new Alders, I would say it is important that you have good relationship with the city staff, respect them, understand that they are working for all the 20 of you, not only you as an Alder or the mayor as a matter of reality. And so, having that good relationship, I think, will help to really put the city at a better place as opposed to really inconveniencing them. It is important that you inconvenience them, but do it in a respectable way, I would say. I would also like to thank my family for giving me the space, obviously, to be staying on council meeting until late at night. And so, my wife, Vado, is one of the most peaceful and loving human beings I have ever come across. So, I want to say thank you to her. Thank you to all my African immigrant community. Thank you to all the immigrant community, particularly those from the Gambia and Southeast Asian part of it. And so, I am very grateful for the opportunity. This will be my last day at the council, but obviously, I will keep up and I'll definitely work hard to make sure that our city is better. Like some of you indicated, you want to leave this world making it better than the way you found it. To my close, close friends at the council, Alder Hennig, Alder McKinney, Seri, Alder Abbas, Alder Wahili, and just thank you. Thank you for believing me. Thank you for supporting me. And to the rest of my colleagues, my Verve has been there the longest. When you get a chance to talk to Mike and you are down about the council, one or two words from him will want you to stay in council forever. So, thank you, Mike, also for being that force to be reckoned with. But also, that longevity, I mean, the history of the council is with you. So, I really appreciate each and every encounter with each and every one of you, even if I didn't have a very strongly built relationship, personal relationship. I have always appreciated your presence, the work that you do, and also just even how we disagree. I mean, like I said, I take this just to be my job, representing my people, but I never take anything personal. And so, thank you, everybody. I know it's been a long time. To the mayor, I know the city is in good hands. Me and you also sometimes do not see things the same. But I do hope you understand that this is in an effort just to make our city better. To your staff, I mean, they've been very helpful and supportive, your staff and the previous mayor. Linda is a giant into your office, as is always with a smile on her face. And so, I really, really appreciate her input into what I'm thinking and wanting to do and the advice she always given me. So, thank you to everyone, to the new Alders. I know some of you have spoken to Alders I have not. But like I said, I mean, if you want to be successful, do not be partisan. But do not also disagree forever, disagree to agree. I mean, it is all our city, and it is our responsibility to make it better. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alder Balday. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objections? Recording enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And we will come to item 12, excuse me, item 10, which is Legisstar 65086, "An Honoring Resolution Commending and Thanking Alder Person Rebecca Kemble for Her Dedicated Service to the Constituents in District 18 and to the City of Madison." Alder Foster, will you read the honoring resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Alder Person Rebecca Kemble was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 7, 2015. And whereas Alder Person Kemble served on the Ad-Hoc Task Force on the Structure of City Government, Final Report Implementation Work Group, Alder Work Group to Develop Logistics and Operational Details for MPD Independent Civilian Oversight, Committee on Aging, Common Council Executive Committee, Common Council Organizational Committee, Economic Development Committee, Equal Opportunities Commission, Finance Committee, Madison Food Policy Council, Metro Paratransit Medicaid Waiver Funding and Policy Review Ad-Hoc Committee, Oscar Meyer Strategic Assessment Committee, Pedestrian Bicycle Motor Vehicle Commission, President's Work Group on Police and Community Relations, President's Work Group to Develop Citywide Surveillance Equipment and Data Management Policies, Task Force on Structure of City Government, Transit and Parking Commission, Transportation Commission, Transportation Ordinance Review Ad-Hoc Committee, Transportation Policy and Planning Board, and Warner Park Community Recreation Center Advisory Subcommittee. And whereas during her tenure in office, Alder Person Kemble was focused on bringing improvements to city governance and administrative systems. And whereas through the Transportation Ordinance Review Ad-Hoc Committee, Alder Person Kemble worked on changing Madison's transportation ordinances to ensure that the City of Madison has the staff positions, recreating the Department of Transportation and policy body, Transportation Policy and Planning Board, to take responsibility for the important work of planning our transportation system for a sustainable future. And whereas Alder Person Kemble authored the Compromise Resolution for getting the Task Force on the Structure of City Government and worked to develop recommendations to greatly expand and enhance resident representation, inclusion, and involvement with city government and to break down silos between city agencies. And whereas for the entire six years of Alder Person Kemble's tenure on the Common Council, she participated in work groups and committees. President's Work Group on Police and Community Relations, President's Work Group to Develop Surveillance Equipment and Data Policy, and Alder Work Group to Develop Logistics and Operational Details for MPD's Independent Civilian Oversight, to increase civilian oversight and accountability of the police, resulting in the Common Council adopting 177 recommendations for improvements within MPD and creation of the Civilian Oversight Board and the position of an independent police monitor. And whereas as an Equal Opportunities Commissioner, Alder Person Kemble brought in housing professionals and researchers and tenant groups to inform the EOC's investigation into the worsening eviction and non-renewal crisis in Madison. And whereas Alder Person Kemble led the efforts to respond to the Air Force's proposal to cite F-35A fighter jets in Madison, which culminated in the adoption of Council Resolution 200028A opposing the selection of Truax Field as a preferred location for the fifth operational bed down and requesting that the Secretary of the US and requesting that the Secretary of the US Air Force not move forward with the bed down of F-35A jets at Truax Field and to remove Truax Field from future consideration. And whereas the years of working with Menota School, fourth and fifth graders, through the Community Pups Program has been Elder Person Campbell's greatest joy as an Alder. And whereas Elder Person Campbell is thrilled to turn her focus toward growing in her new role as grandmother to baby pro. And whereas Elder Person Rebecca Campbell, through her hard work and dedication to her Aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the state of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank Elder Person Rebecca for her dedicated service to her constituents in District Eighteen and to the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Foster will move. Is there a second? Alder Rommel will second. And are there Alders who wish to speak? Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Rebecca for being a transformational leader on the council. She's, I guess, been, for many of us, a moral center on what is justice require from us as people who have power at city government? How do we use our power to best move, as I said earlier, the needle of progress forward? And she has been tenacious and a committed representative for her district and for all the work she has taken up at the council level. And I've been honored to serve with her and I will be sorry to see her go. I think, but I look forward to what else she will do moving forward. And I just wanted to remind the council that we, she represented us at Standing Rock, where she took a resolution we passed in honor of the water protectors in North Dakota. And hopefully I got that right. But she traveled there and used her journalistic skills to show the repression that was going on there. And this sort of represents to me all the ways that she is out there in our community and in the world trying to make push for mutual aid and taking care of each other. And I just wanted to close, because I'm going to cry, by saying that one of the things that just showed me how brilliant and able she is is she did something I've never seen before in 12 years. Is she got the two school districts in the city to swap land? So parts of her district could stay in Madison's schools. And I think many other Alders would have been, oh darn, you know, that's just too bad. And not done a goddamn thing about it. But she and Elder Abas both took that up and stewarded that and did something really important for her area. So I just want to thank you and you have a great legacy, Rebecca. And I'll see you around, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas.
As me and Alder Campbell, we both know, the resident of District 12 and 18, they see both districts as a North Side district. And there are a lot of mutual issues we both faced, even the whole East Side faced. I really appreciate your leadership, working with me and many others on F-35, also on PFAS, also issues which we face on the North Side on Metro, Warner Park Extension, working collaboratively with North Side Planning Council on several programs together. Also on different development projects, including Alder Rommel mentioned about MMSD. These are some of the example which I worked with you in the last two years. And I'm sure there are many Alders here who worked on many issues with you, on many things. And I also learned a lot from you as well. So I really appreciate all of your service, not only City of Madison, but also on the North Side. Really appreciate all the work and commitment you put in a place for the North Side. So thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Alder Campbell.
Well, thank you, everyone, and for those words. And ooh, Marsha, you got me crying. I have one parting gift to all of you, and that is to not make a speech. I didn't prepare a speech. I knew I would be at the end of a very long day. And today is about the new Alders and new leadership. And I just echo everything that everyone has said about, well, let me just say that it's been like an intense learning experience serving on the city council, learning both in terms of the content of all the areas I've worked in and as well as learning about the actual power structures in the City of Madison that goes way beyond city government. So I hope for you new Alders that you also have an intense, you've just had an intense couple of weeks, I'm sure, with your new Alder orientation, but you're going to learn a lot. And I just would ask you to remember why you ran for council and stick to that, to those principles that you're fighting for and stick to those promises that you made to your constituents when, to get them to vote for you. And learn about what the power of collective decision-making at the council level really is. Because we're not just little bosses of our districts. We collectively represent the people of the city and we have power in state statute to exercise that power along, you know, shared values and the shared priorities that you come up with. So I hope that new council leadership will help organize you in such a way that you can really embody that power and work for the people of Madison, especially for those who do not have lobbyists, for those who do not have an organized voice in nonprofits or in corporations and for those for whom, you know, you've said you're wanting to fight for. So best of luck with that. Thanks to the just stellar city staff who, you know, we've learned together so many things that as we've created things, I'm getting emotional thinking about about all of the amazing staff who worked on the Tork and the T-Fogs and all of these, who thought really deeply about systemic issues and who, from their, you know, place of, they have a job in this system, really were open-minded enough to really think about how those jobs might change in order to serve the people of the city better. So thank you for all of your openness, your cooperation, and good luck to you all.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objections to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing none, that vote will be recorded. President Carter, can I have a motion, please, to refer all unfinished business to the organizational meeting? President Carter, you're muted.
I move to refer all unfinished business to the organizational meeting.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to refer all unfinished business to the organizational meeting. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record that unanimous vote. And now I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the 162nd Council of the City of Madison, Sina Di.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn Sina Di. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, the 162nd Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin is adjourned. And we will now swear in the 163rd Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin. Madam Clerk?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
I, Sherry Carter.
Elder McKinney.
Mr. Abas.
Do solemnly affirm
Insolently.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And will perform the duties of Common Council members.
And will perform the duties of Common Council members.
In and for the City of Madison.
In and for the City of Madison.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Woo!
Congratulations, Alders. President Carter, can I please have a motion to convene the 163rd Common Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin in an organizational meeting? So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Seeing none, you will convene in an organizational meeting and I will pass the chair to President Carter.
Thank you. For the clerks, can I get a roll call?
Alders Heck?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thank you. Miyazi?
Here.
Thank you, Vervier?
Here.
Vidaver?
Here.
Thank you. Wihelia?
Here.
Thank you. Abbas?
Here.
Alboris?
Here.
Benford?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter?
Present.
Conklin?
Here.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Figaroa Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson?
Here.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have the instructions for voting for the president?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Can you give those instructions before I take nominations?
Absolutely. There we go. All right, good afternoon, council. For the elections today, we will be using the Poll Everywhere software program. You have been emailed a link to the webpage to use to vote and to see the results of the voting. One quick note about the voting interface. When you click on your choice for president and then for vice president, the vote is recorded. You will see your vote highlighted on the page. There is no need to click a submit button. You will also see a button to clear your vote. Feel free to use this if you need to recast your vote. Once we see that 20 votes have been cast, we will announce that and we will leave some time for last-minute corrections. Once that time is past, we will close the election. At that point, you will not be able to cast a vote or change your vote. We will then display the results, which will be on your screen. We will take nominations from the floor and Alders will cast one vote for their choice of president. An Alder may abstain, but write-in votes will not be permitted. The winning candidate must receive at least 11 votes. If no candidate receives 11 votes, then additional rounds will be conducted until one candidate attains 11 votes. If there are more than two candidates, all candidates remain on successive ballots unless they withdraw from the election. The software will allow Alders to use the same link regardless of how many ballots are needed. The software procedures will be managed by and the results will be announced by the clerk's staff. After the election of president, nominations for and the election of vice president will occur using the same process.
Thank you. We have a question. Go ahead, Alder Nasra.
I can't find the link. Can someone send me the link, please?
Does everyone, before we take nominations, can everyone check to see if they have the link?
And we did send out an email with the link to everybody at about 11:35 or so. And if you are returning Alder, it would be in your Aldermanic email account.
And it was sent out at 11?
11:35.
11:35. Somewhere in there. Did everyone find the link? Alder McKinney?
I have a question. I am on my laptop and I found the link on my phone. Would I be able to vote from my phone and that will be registered?
Yes, that is possible.
Thank you.
Alder Nasra?
I can't find it yet.
Can we resend that to Alder Nasra?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so that's coming to you?
And.
Alder McKinney, do you have another question, because your hand is up? Okay.
All right.
Okay, I see. I think we're ready. Alder Nasra, do you have the link now?
Is the link the same for everybody?
Clerk Tom Thomas, is the link the same for everybody?
Yep.
I got it, I got it.
It is.
All right, I take that.
Okay, so we're going to get going then. Okay. For nomination for Common Council President. Are there any nominations for Common Council President? I will take the liberty of nominating Alder Sayad Abbas for Common Council President. Are there any other nominations for Common Council President? We go three times, but I see there is a hand up. Alder Lemmer, I love your hair, by the way. I want that to be officially on the record.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would like to second Alder Abbas nomination.
Thank you very much. For the third time, are there any other nominations for Common Council President? I see that there are none. Then we will commence to voting. So please go to your link.
And that will be, my apologies, that will be active in just a moment.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Let us know when we can go to that link.
President Carter?
Yes.
I'd be ready to go.
I just wanted to ask if it's, if there's an opportunity for us to just vote by acclamation since there's only one candidate. I'm not sure if that's within the bounds of the procedure or not.
We could, but I wanted to make sure that this new software worked. That's why I wanted to use it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Foster.
And you should be able to cast votes now.
Let's do it, folks. Let's do it, folks. The suspension is killing me. Who won? Who won?
We have nineteen votes at this point. I think we're waiting for twenty.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
All right, I'm on the poll for everywhere and I'm, it's asking me to log in, but it's not recognizing me.
Okay. Can someone from our tech staff work with Alder McKinney? And while they're doing that, Alder McKinney, can you mute yourself? This is where you're almost at the end of the movie. And a thunderstorm comes in and your satellite goes out.
Alder McKinney, are you still seeing a login prompt?
I, I'm seeing, if I'm not able to, could a staff person call me on my cellphone and I can, I can vote that way because I don't want to hold up the vote?
Will do.
And call me on my, my personal cell?
Okay, um. You're still working on it, huh? We'll wait a few more minutes and then we will, I will make an announcement.
We now have twenty votes? Like...
Thomas, can you tell us who won the presidency? It's killing us.
At this point, I think it should be on the screen.
Alder Abbas, you are our next president for the one hundred and sixty-third common council. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And thank you all of my colleagues for trusting my leadership and I really look forward to work with you all and represent Common Council Vice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alder McKinney, I've already with exuberance announced the presidency. How can we help you? Oh, okay. Okay, great. I was worried there for a minute. Okay, so we are now gonna go on to the next thing. Clerk Lund, can you? Oh, thank you. You read my mind. You read my mind. We're gonna go on to the election of the common council vice president. Do I have a nomination? Alder Lemer?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Alder Martin for vice president.
Thank you very much. Do I have any nomination? Oh, you're gonna test me on your name. Alder V- Veder?
Vidiver. I was gonna second the nomination, so I apologize if that's out of order.
That's okay. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Do I have a second? No. Oh, Alder Lemer?
Oh, nothing. I will speak to my motion when we're ready for that.
Okay, great. Um, well, why don't we do that now? That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. It is my distinct honor to nominate Alder Martin for council vice president. A three-term Alder and the first Native American woman ever elected to Madison City Council. She has been a relentless advocate for equity, for voting access at a time when voting rights have been under constant attack. She's worked to further the city's work on historical preservation and she has led her district through challenging and complex developments such as Madison Yards Project. She has unique insight and shows the critical leadership skills that we need as we work to address our ongoing housing crisis in a way that reduces barriers and dismantles discriminatory elements that are still contributing to the lack of equitable housing access. As we reimagine policing, Alder Martin has led the charge in establishing a mobile crisis unit modeled after the Kahoots program. She brings empathy, creativity, reliability, and the ability to teach and mentor others. She's done the work of bringing people together and that's something that I think we sorely need right now. Alder Martin, in her third term on council, is one of just four re-elected Alders who's served more than one term on council. So I think that we greatly need her institutional knowledge and leadership. And we need women in leadership. I think it would send a great message to elect the first Native American woman as council vice president and a woman who has such a deep understanding of the challenges facing us with the skill set that we need right now in order to move things forward. So I'm very proud and very honored to be supporting Alder Martin for vice president and I urge you to support her. Thank you.
Alder Martin, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Do we have any other nom- Alder Foster?
I'd like to nominate Alder Benford.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I think it's only fair that someone does second, but if that's the way you want to roll.
I'll second.
Thank you. Alder Foster, it's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I think, you know, Brian is coming back onto the council after having served earlier. I think he brings a really unique perspective and I really appreciate his focus on really building collaboration and getting us to work together as a council. So I think he, as Alder Lemer said, we don't have many folks left that have experience on the council and I would really appreciate Brian's experience in a leadership role.
Thank you. Alder Benford, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you, Madam President. It's my honor to accept.
Thank you. We have two candidates and I was let each candidate speak to their nomination. We'll start out with Alder Martin.
Thank you. Pinagigi to Lindsay and to Alders Lemer and Vidiver, thank you for the nomination. I am really honored and, like I said, I do accept. We've just spent a little over a year dealing with unprecedented challenges as a city. And even when we get through this and the pandemic is over or handled, we're gonna have a tremendous amount of work to do. But we also have a big opportunity to remake how our city will operate once the threat of COVID passes. People talk about what happens when we get back to normal, whether, you know, are people going to go back to the office, kids going back to school? What's, what is going to be normal again? It's clear that, that we are gonna need to make some changes and create this new normal, one that takes the lessons that we've learned over this last year during the pandemic, uses an equity lens in order to make our body and its processes accessible and transparent. We already have a great start on this work as the Task Force for Government Structure Committee has come up with a list of recommendations for us as a body to implement. The need of some, for some of these recommendations has absolutely been confirmed by our experiences over the past year. Due to our Zoom meetings, public participation has been far more robust and we've been able to engage constituents that haven't previously been involved in, in city issues because they have the access online. Keeping people engaged and figuring out what our meetings look like as we transition to this new normal will be absolutely key in helping us better serve our city. As vice president, my focus will also be working, will also be on working with President Abbas to ensure that council meeting agendas are planned to prevent late-night meetings as much as we can. The later our meetings go, the fewer eyes that we have on our work and the less likely we are to have the public available to comment on items up for consideration. We also owe it to our residents to make sure that their comments are heard and they don't have to worry about having an item they came to testify on referred to a future date after they waited for six hours to share their thoughts with us. I'm excited to be beginning my third term as a member of this body. The past four years have been unpredictable, but it's been a valuable journey. Besides dealing with this unprecedented pandemic, I've worked with my colleagues on calls for overdue action on inequality, which has resulted in the creation of the Civilian Oversight Board and Independent Monitor, economic development topics like Judge Doyle Square and the upcoming public market and what is likely to be the largest development in city history, right in my district, of the Madison Yards Project. It's even in my own neighborhood. I've also been involved in working on improving citizen engagement with, with public meetings with constituents and such. My involvement in challenging budgets as the city's needs has increased, but our ability to raise revenue has been decreased, has been really valuable as to how we work as a city and where we place our priorities. In August of 2018, we had that massive flooding event that affected the city and it hit my district particularly hard. I worked with city staff and residents to find solutions, both immediate and long-term, to support those whose homes and businesses were destroyed and to mitigate future storm events as much as we can. This is an ongoing process and we are still going over the studies that have been done over in stormwater districts and watersheds and we'll be implementing them as, as we can. I'm proud to have served on a committee that, to create the city's first historic preservation plan that will help us preserve the stories and the history of Madison and specifically including the stories of communities that have been marginalized throughout history as well as another rewrite to the city's lengthy and complicated landmarks ordinance. I've worked directly with city staff to create our crisis response team to provide better care to those in Madison facing mental health crises and I'm excited to see the first phase of that program launch very soon. The breadth of my experience throughout these four years provides me with a solid base of knowledge for potential future issues that we as a city will face and with that eye towards equity. This, this is a really exciting time. This body has eight new members and each one of you brings a new energy and excitement for our work. Between all the twenty of us, we all have different talents, experiences, and skills that I know that will serve our city well. I'm truly excited and honored to work with you all over the next term and would again be honored to earn your vote to help guide Madison to our new normal and serve our citizens as we continue to grow and move beyond this year of trials. What are you getting, Ashna? Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Benford?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo something that I wrote that was published in the Capital Times just yesterday. But before I start that, I just really, I'm deeply honored to be back on the council and I hope you're all safe and well. I'm sending you all my love. So, you know, much has been written and talked about the City of Madison's common council's newfound diversity. As one of the newly elected BIPOC Alders, I celebrate and appreciate the historic opportunity in which we will serve. You see, when I moved to Madison in 1979, I could have never imagined such a diverse common council. I look forward to serving with each and every one of you. Our beautiful intersectionality makes us all unique and cherished. Talking about intersectionality, I'm a sixty-one-year-old black man. I'm a proud father of five amazingly gifted diverse children. For thirty years, I worked within countless community-based settings, serving vulnerable children, parents, families, and communities to reach their full potentials, including my current work with the UW Madison Odyssey Project. I love our natural environments, having spent all my life hiking, camping, fishing, and hunting and basing my spirituality around nature. I am gifted with a vast, loving family. I have navigated many different cultures with humility and gained deep appreciation for diversity. And I like long walks on beaches, holding hands, and long tender kisses and grapes. All of us Alders are products of our own personal realities and our collective intersectionality is like a wonderful mosaic. As I look at all of your faces, we are a beautiful collective body. I share this because while I enjoy seeing the racial diversity on the council, I have to say this as clearly and from the heart as I can. What ultimately matters is what can all of us Alders do collectively to make Madison a place that all can reach their full potentials, regardless of race, income, or zip code? It would be flat-out racist to assume that every black person thinks alike, just as it would be insane to say that all white people share similar views. I believe that this council will rise to the task of helping to bring people from different backgrounds together to forge a new, safe, socially just, and equitable Madison. With COVID-19 and for centuries longer systemic racism, oppression, poverty, and the horrendous racial disparities and environmental injustices in our midst, all members of the council will have to come together in unity, respect, and do I dare say, love to make Madison a model city for all. I'm really honored to be part of this history. I'm so honored to be considered to be your next vice president, where I will dedicate my being to uniting us all. So you see, in the past, there has always been unneeded and counterproductive drama between members of this body. It's gone on. We're the one hundred and sixty-third. I can promise you, it's been there from the beginning. But you see, with all the issues that we face as a city, we truly have to unite before the city can truly begin to heal and come together. I will serve with all my being to help us achieve this goal. I will serve with all my being to help us achieve this goal. Once again, I'm deeply honored for your consideration and I would deeply appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We can now go to your email and vote.
Yeah, one quick moment and we'll be able to do that.
All right. Let us know when we can do that. Does anyone have any questions? I thought I saw a hand up. No? Okay, great.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for waiting. Feel free to cast your vote.
Thank you.
We now have a total of 20 votes. We'll give you a moment or two. Thank you very much. We will close the election. And the results should be on the screen. Arvina Martin, 12; Brian Benford, 7; abstain, 1.
Congratulations, Arvina, for being our 163rd Vice President. Where is Arvina? Oh, there you are, Arvina. Congratulations. Our leadership team. Alder Sayadabas and Alder Arvina Martin. I look forward to serving under you both. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Yes, move the motion to adjourn committee as a whole and recess the meeting at 6:30.
Second. Thank you for the second, Arvina, and we will see you all at 6:30. Thank you to the clerk's office for hanging in there and doing a fantastic job today. We'll all meet at 6:30. Thank you.